All right. I do know where I'm at, I mean, most days. Good morning, everybody. Today is Wednesday, August 3rd, believe it or not, 2022, and we're here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners Board Session at 9:00 AM in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Say it again. Yes.
Yay. All right, so we start with public comment each week when we have individuals signed up, and the first person today is David Bean.
Who's he?
I know. Who is he? He knows the rules.
Good morning, David.
Yes, you do. You could probably run this show.
Smiling face.
No, I don't run this.
Oh, well, soon enough, maybe.
Do we share this?
Good morning. Go ahead and introduce yourself and your residence for the record.
My name is David Bean. I'm a spokesman for disadvantaged people in Salem area from Marion County. I'm wondering if we can get a fan in their restaurant, because a lot of seniors goes in there, and what happens if they get sick? You don't have, because we had this virus, and I was thinking if we can get a fan in there, make it safer for everybody that works here, be safer for them, be cooled off.
David, do you mean air conditioning by chance?
Yes, yes.
So, I think the whole building has air conditioning.
Not in there.
But that specific cafe is managed by chariots.
But I was thinking, I already talked to Alan.
Okay.
He said that the county commissioners should look at it too and see if we can work out a deal for the presentation.
Of course he did. All governments want to share the price, right?
Alan said he would pay some, and then county maybe work out a deal.
Okay, well, Jan will follow up with Alan and talk about it.
Because I think it'll be good, because Alan said it's a good idea, because a lot of employees run the bus system.
Yeah.
And it's said that it's really bad for them.
Great.
Chairman of the chair, if I may.
Yeah.
As a former restaurateur, if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. You know that's what they used to say. David, thank you.
Thanks for being here. We'll follow up with our condo association on that topic.
And I already talked to the people who work there, don't say they need that really bad.
I know, we see them, I see them often.
Yeah. And I come in there and I told them I would do this for them.
Okay. Well, that was great of you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
I'm doing well, well.
Good, I'm glad. I look forward to seeing the state fair improve with you being a part of their organization.
Thank you.
You know he's on the state fair board, so you're going to have to wrangle him.
He asked me to put in a good word for him, and I said, well, you already got hired, so why do you need me to say anything?
I want the county commissioner to prove that, then all the employees over there knows who I am.
Well, I think that they watch, so they know who you are already.
And I was thinking, I still want to be on the advisory boards for the mental health programs too.
Yeah.
I want to stay on that.
Good.
For your term. We'd love to have you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I'm asking for.
Stay cool today. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Have a good day, Commissioner.
You too. All right, and then next up is Keisha Martinez. Good morning. So for the record, please introduce yourself and give us your residence for the record.
Hi, my name is Keisha Martinez, and as far as residence, that's confidential, but it is in Marion County, and there's a couple of addresses that I guess I could use.
Nope, it's fine, confidential's fine. You're in Marion County.
The issue is, is one of the residents is up in dispute, and as the commissioners are aware, and right now, I'm having concerns with across the street over at the courthouse, with the sheriff's office, with being able to actually get things, how do I say it? For them to give me callbacks. I recently, with me, with these disputes that I've been having with the county and with others at the bank, with money missing, not missing, stolen, I'm being bounced between the Woodburn Police and the Marion County Sheriff's Office. I'm getting calls back from the Woodburn Police, but I'm not getting calls back from the Marion County Sheriff's Office. And the Marion County Sheriff's Office, from what I could see through what was a hack, which I was able to decode, and I was able to look at the code, and it was very concerning because when I was receiving calls from those, I was being referred to a mental health specialist, which was, in my opinion, very discriminatory and very, just very unprofessional. So, I am here today because I am needing to find out what the Board of Commissioners, if anything, can do to ensure that I have equal rights and access to reporting the most basic of crimes.
Okay, thanks for being here.
And do you have anything for me right now?
No.
Or will you be able to respond later? Can we set this over for the next agenda for a response?
That's not typically how public comment works. We listen and hear you, and the sheriff's office has staff that pays attention, and so if you've been in touch with them, then they will go through their proper procedures to engage that if there's a criminal situation, which is, it sounds to me like you're going through the proper procedure. The Board of Commissioners has nothing to do with the courts or the sheriff's office as far as the law goes.
Okay.
We oversee their staff and their budgets, but that's about it. My advice is to, if you don't feel like you're getting a callback, just to walk across the street and talk to them in person.
I definitely have done that. I did that yesterday, and what they do is tell me to call the phone number, and I also went to the district attorney's office, and from what I could tell, a lot of these calls have not been forwarded to the district attorneys for prosecution or any type of investigation.
Well, the DA's office is on the third floor, so you could also just go upstairs, and you could talk to one of their individuals, one of their staff assistants, and ask them what the proper procedure is to ask them to look into it.
I have, I did that yesterday. So I'm following everything that I need to do, and I already know what I need to do. That's not the concern. The concern is that despite me knowing what needs to happen, there's that discrimination aspect that I believe that the county commissioners and the public need to be aware of that is occurring, because it is occurring, and so that's why I came here today.
Keisha, I'm also aware that you have made some substantial complaints against the board, and you've talked to our legal counsel, and so if in fact you are stating a claim of suit, then you need to go through the procedures that our legal counsel provided you, and at that point, then the board can't interact with you because of the laws.
Right, and I understand that, and that's, but, you know, people do need to be aware of what's going on, and if I come and I speak with somebody, and they're telling me that there's no legal action, and then what is being told to me is giving me an 800 number to call, you know, the, you know, the state board, you know, for the legal bar. It's just unacceptable.
I believe that that number was provided to you, so that way you could seek legal advice for your person.
Right, but that was a nonverifiable, nonverifiable number, an 800 number. Any police officer will tell you that, but that's beside the point.
Well, you can always Google the Oregon State Bar Association and get information from them directly.
I don't need your assistance, and thank you so much, Daniel, but I don't need that information.
Well, thanks for coming today and providing that information.
I really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, now we'll move on to our first presentation, looks like maybe only presentation of the day. Strategic Economic Development Corporation, SEDCOR, of the Mid Willamette Valley Quarterly Report, and it looks like we have a slew of folks, so before I introduce you directly, I'll let you come forward and you can introduce yourselves.
I live in Salem, Marion County.
Nick Harville with SEDCOR. I live in Silverton.
Hi, I'm Adam Frankum with Community Services Department as the ECON development specialist, and so here to, well, SEDCOR introduced themselves, so here to have Eric Anderson and Nick Harville of SEDCOR present their quarterly report. Currently, right now, we are in our fifth and final year of our contract with SEDCOR. The total is $160,000 a year. This is the fifth year, and that contract expires on June 30th, 2023, and these are funds funded by ECONOC Developments Funds for Business Retention and Attraction. And so SEDCOR is a great company, here to do, not company, group, here to do their presentation, their quarterly report, just kind of form the board of the work they do.
Great, thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. Once I think you folks all know what we're about, but for other folks that may be tuning in or here in the room, we're about leveraging public and private partnerships to successfully grow, retain, and attract high-value jobs and capital investment in the Mid Willamette Valley. We work in Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties, and we pride ourselves on our ability to make connections and network, and our informal motto as a result of that is, we know a guy or we know a gal. And when we're out talking to a business and they have some issues or opportunities, we try to make those introductions. Part of our job description, if you will, is other duties as assigned or required, and as you all know, we've been heavily engaged with our partners in Marion County on San Yen Canyon Recovery, Fire Recovery Efforts. Nick has been leading that charge for us at SEDCOR, and I wanted him to first give an update on the work he's been doing and what's been happening in the canyon.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I serve on the San Yen Canyon Long-Term Recovery Group.
Who's this guy?
He did introduce himself, but are you going to harass him more?
Nick Harville, SEDCOR. Thank you.
He just wants to harass you, don't want to do that.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
Good morning, Carl. I serve on their executive committee and their board. These are photos of the Detroit Community Center, Resiliency Center. You were all up there for the opening, and it was quite a celebration. It was nice to see other mayors there, too. I know John McCartell from Independence was there to be in support of the project. It took 92 companies and groups to contribute to get this project done, and it took over, little over a year. Rich Duncan was the general contractor. Companies like Owen, Segman, Allied Rock contributed heavily to the project, but they're all part of that canyon community. It's a great project, and I continue to work with several contractors that are building homes. We've been working on helping people get through the planning process and getting permits filed. Most of the people that have the ability to rebuild have. I think somewhere around 50% of the houses are rebuilt at this time, so I have had a couple of people in the last three weeks say, I'm done, I'm not going to do it, that started down the path and have decided not to rebuild. So, I continue to work and try and rebuild the canyon. It's kind of a tough situation. One of the things I've been working on is, one of our members came to me and said, I have a bunch of extra material. They sell I-joists, but it's for commercial buildings, and he wanted to donate it to fire victims to help rebuild their houses for joists and whatever. The problem is, you have to have them specked into the plans, the architectural plans. So it wasn't as easy as, okay, I have this I-joist, I can take out this two-by-eight. It doesn't work that way. You've got to redo the plans, and it's been kind of a struggle. It's a very generous offer. I appreciate their offer, and just trying to find ways to utilize that donation, but, okay.
Thanks, Nick. From the business retention expansion perspective, that's really the guts of our work plan. A couple of kind of key initiatives that we wanted to highlight today. As you probably can tell, we have a pretty big cluster of warehouse and distribution facilities around Marion County, particularly up and down the I-5 corridor, and one of the challenges we have right now is, everyone knows, in just about every industry, including the public sector, is workforce. As we prepare for a pretty major employer coming into Woodburn with a new Amazon facility that seems to be getting bigger every day I drive by it, we worked with Shemeka, the community college, to revitalize or kind of reintroduce a program that they had put together pre-pandemic, and it never really got launched. It was a, it is a certification or certificate program, a training program for warehouse and distribution workers, and largely centered on safety and forklift driving and that sort of thing. We decided, working with the Willamette Workforce Partnership, Shemeka, the community college, and the city of Woodburn, that we'd like to take another look at that curriculum. I think we were questioning whether or not businesses really need, you know, a certificate, a piece of paper, and the 34 hours or whatever the number of hours that are required to get that training. Also, the nature of the industry has changed quite a bit in the last couple of years, much more robotics being integrated into the systems. We're also looking at Spanish language opportunities for training, and as a result of that, I think the suggestion was, well, before we do anything major, let's get those businesses back together again and talk about what their needs are as we move forward. So we're planning to have two roundtable discussions in September, one in Woodburn and one here in Salem, to, with the warehouse and distribution industry, just to talk about what their needs are. We know it's going to be workers, but what the skills are, what the career ladder opportunities are like, and really what that mix of skills that they're looking for, and really how we can provide that information back to the school districts to really start, you know, priming the pump for workforce in the future. Also, we've got a picture of Molly MacCargill of Pear Mine Farms up here. We have been engaged in this ag innovation work under funding from the Economic Development Administration, but really what that's allowed us to do is magnify our work with ag growers and processors in the region, which is work that SEDCOR has been doing really since its inception, given the importance of that industry, particularly here in Marion County. I won't play the video, it's a nine-minute video, but we'll certainly get you the link for it. It's a very impressive discussion with Molly of Pear Mine Farms, just talking about, you know, what a farmer has to deal with in an everyday world, you know, that there are HR, production, sales, marketing, agronomists, maintenance, and really what we're trying to do is keep the education flowing as to what agriculture is and what that really means in this area, because I think a lot of people see it as a somewhat archaic, almost, skillset that's required, and it's really important for us to continue that, continue that work. Last time we were here, we talked a little bit about Yamasa. We had made a connection with them, probably going on almost two years ago, with Root and Clough Farms to provide a source of locally grown wheat for their soy sauce, and Nick, maybe you can talk a little bit about the roundtable that we put together this last quarter.
Yeah, about a quarter ago, we brought together eight major ag producers from the valley to meet with Yamasa to see what their criteria was for their wheat, and it can be grown. The Root and Cloughs proved that it could be grown at the protein levels and the moisture level that they require. Just to give you a little background, a lot of the wheat that they buy is bought through a broker, and it's Canadian wheat, something that we can grow here in the valley. The real issue is not that we can't grow it, we could probably grow a fairly good percentage of what they require annually. The big issue is storage. Yamasa doesn't have the storage. Some of the farms have storage, and it has to be, because it's human consumption, it has to be kept in a very specific way. So that's kind of the major block to try and figure out. There was a small grain facility in Yamhill County that was for sale. I brought that to Yamasa's attention, and the office here has shared it with their office in Japan for their decision-making process. So, and even that, with probably, I think it was like 110,000 bushels, would not be enough for the annual storage, but we have other companies like Marion Ag that do have storage capacity, but that's the biggest hangup. We can grow it, there's no problem that we can't grow it, and it gives our producers another avenue of revenue. It's just storage for when they need it, and there's no rail service at the facility here in Salem, so it all has to be trucked in and dumped. So, but we continue to try and solve the problems. We know a guy.
And we do see that opportunity when you look at the very diverse number of industries in the, you know, supply chain of agriculture and food processing in this region, food and beverage processing. Each time we have this kind of conversation, we kind of refer to it as growing the economy from within. It's actually trying to add value to the various links in that chain.
One of the things I might add to what Eric was talking about, distribution, I've been with SEDCOR about 15 years, and even before I came to SEDCOR, one of the distribution centers in the north part of the county has been talking about an expansion. Last week, they said they had actually plans in for permit, which I think is just absolutely wonderful. I've been through four managers now at that facility, and they've all said, well, we're going to expand, and they did expand. They built a new facility in Nevada, thought that would take care of things, and it didn't, but it's 180,000 square foot expansion, if they go through with it, that would happen next year. So we continue to grow our distribution centers.
I think what a lot of people sometimes forget, that was viewed as a strategy for this region not all that long ago, particularly when you look at the Mill Creek being public land, and the improvements that were made to the I-5 interchange at Kubler, that industry was targeted, and I think now when we actually have warehouse and distribution businesses, some of our state partners don't view those as being the innovative sexy jobs that they'd like us to be promoting in this area, but we kind of remind them that, hey, this was considered strategic, you know, when this, you know, project was developed originally. Just on the subject of workforce, we took some resources that we had and worked with the Technology Association of Oregon to develop a dashboard for jobs in the, what we call the tech and non-tech industries. I think one of the things that we're all guilty of is when you think about tech jobs, we think about companies like Intel, and the work that we're doing here and what we're hearing from our CTE program professionals, and what we hear from businesses, is that the nature of the industry is changing, and the types of jobs that are needed to be filled in these industries are becoming increasingly technology-oriented as they adopt new technologies, whether it's robotics, or software programming, or, you know, analytics. So we worked with these folks in a company called E-Impact that does these dashboards, really around the country and I think internationally, to develop basically tech jobs in non-tech industries, and particularly agriculture. And, you know, some of the numbers that we see, the growth is staggering. Those numbers are relatively small, but they're growing a lot, and this is the kind of information that, working through the connections with the CTE programs, trying to get that information back to the, you know, to the schools, that they understand, and their students understand, that there are career opportunities and very exciting technologies right here in agriculture and food processing in the region. Some of the biggest demand jobs in these codes, the NACs codes for food and beverage processing, computer information systems, mechanical, industrial, and electrical engineers, software developers, quality assurance, systems analysts, computer systems administrators, plant and soil scientists, and food science and technologies. So I think that just kind of shows the depth and breadth of the industry here, so it's something that we're really excited about, having some actual data that we can share and keep track of on a regular basis. And the salaries for those jobs, you know, when we talk about food processing, a lot of folks say, well, you know, the jobs don't pay well. We're talking about $80,000 to $100,000 jobs in those topics or those job titles I just mentioned.
One of the, one of the companies in the north end of the county has actually talked about changing technology, has actually developed a machine that has a radar system on it which looks at the crop, and this machine is actually for a crop that we have traditionally for years and years and years grown here in the valley, but the radar can sense the ripeness and the condition of the crop that's being harvested, and can pick the ones that meet the optimum and skip the ones as it's going through the field, four rows at a time, and that's, those machines are like somewhere around a million dollars apiece, and they already have orders when they get the machines all done for $50 million worth of machines. So changes in technology are actually creating jobs here in the county.
So we keep talking about trying to bring sexy back to agriculture. This is what we're talking about. On the recruitment side, we mentioned this the last time, and Commissioner Willis was with us for the soft announcement of Project Justify. We're still not fully public with it, but the company representatives did come and have a public meeting with us to talk about it. It is a warehouse and distribution facility, $1.4 million, sorry, $140 million investment at Mill Creek. 900,000 square foot building is proposed, that's the layout. The good news for us is they're looking at planning for both dry goods distribution and refrigerated goods and frozen goods, which is an opportunity for our growers and our producers in the future as well. 500 jobs to be created on that over time. We have the Enterprise Zone application in, so it's literally any day now, we're going to be able to say the name out loud in a more public setting, but this is one that we've been working on since, I think, January 2019 was when they first contacted me, their consultant, so it shows you how long these projects can take to happen, even with a pandemic in the middle of it. I put up a picture of our greenhouse here. We're getting, just the types of industries that we're, you know, we're connecting with have been notable for ag and kind of the more technology side of ag. We're continuing to work with a business that's hydroponic, organic hydroponic producer for greens for, you know, markets, you know, supermarket, they package, grow and package mixed greens and those sorts of things. They're looking at up to 800,000 square feet of space, greenhouse space, and we've had a second vertical agriculture business that was referred to us from the state, knowing that we were working with one, they thought we had a good package for another one. I have mentioned this at our executive council meeting, but we recently put together a proposal response for a, they call a noble meat processing facility, which, you know, Commissioner Willis is smirking, we had an interesting conversation about it in some detail. I believe it's a new technology coming out of Europe that actually grows meat, kind of in a laboratory setting. It doesn't sound particularly tasty, but it has its environmental benefits.
It sounds very American.
I told Eric I became a much bigger supporter of the vegetable substitutions.
Yeah, we all got impossible burgers afterwards.
Each we dish. I was like, I didn't know how much I liked cauliflower meat before I heard this story.
But it just kind of shows you the types of industries that are looking at the area, and, you know, that I think we feel we have a little bit of an advantage, a relative advantage of because of the nature of the industries that we have and the education infrastructure we have. The, I think the other one you've already heard about is The, I think the other one you've already heard about is Tillman County Smokers. We're excited about their move into Silverton. I don't believe they're producing yet. They're getting, they're getting close, but they are hiring.
They're sweating, but yes, because they had planned to be in business in June and producing. But yeah, the, they have redone floors. They've brought everything up to USDA standards. And an amazing amount of local companies have been hired by Tillman County Smokers to help them with not only mechanical, but the physical changes of the property.
And we're also seeing a lot of activity in the energy field again. Biofuels being one area that we've had a couple of different projects looking at our region, looking at the state, and also hydrogen, both for, mostly for fuel storage, where they would make hydrogen, keep hydrogen, and then convert it to power for peak, you know, peak use when necessary. So just new industries for us to be talking with and kind of learning more about what their needs are and what the infrastructure required to serve them is. Under the innovation entrepreneurship piece, we, in the middle of June, we held our first kickoff for our Latino micro enterprise development program at, here at Shemecata. The, this is in partnership with the Latino Business Alliance and Advanced Economic Solutions and Shemecata Community College. We had over fifty people show up that night, fifty entrepreneurs, and some of them brought their families and kids. And we ran out of food and ran out of seats, which is a good, always a good sign. You still, when you, even when you feel confident, you still think there's only going to be like four or five people to show up. So it was really, really great to hear. And it was actually one of those moments when you really are inspired to hear people's stories. A lot of the folks that were there that currently had businesses really wanted to share their, their journeys and their stories and make themselves available, available as support and mentorship for other new businesses. So the program, we followed up with every one of those businesses that showed up. And we're kind of doing the triage to figure out who needs what. And the first program that we're offering through the Latino Business Alliance will be a leadership, business leadership program. And we also were awarded a Regional Innovation Hub grant for planning for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. This was one per region. And we've gathered together a bunch of different partners, Willamette Workforce Partnership, Shemecata, the Council of Governments. And our work is to really try to figure, and also working with industry and education in the three counties, what an innovation hub would look like. And then theoretically, the state has money to implement. I don't think this is something that SEDCOR would be in the driver's seat on. We, we applied for the grant to help that process and to bring somebody on to, to work this process. But, you know, the state does have money to put these innovation centers in place in each region. And I think it makes sense really for either Shemecata or even some sort of virtual center, where we just do a better job of really sort of aligning and handholding businesses and what they need and identifying who the partners are that can help them. But more to come on that as we, as we, that'll be probably this fall, that we start that planning process, and it'll be a pretty involved process. Also, we've just updated our strategic plan, working with Kinesis to kind of let our board through a discussion of where SEDCOR has been and where we're going. And I think, hopefully you've got a copy of this in what we supplied. Kind of our main areas of work are expansion retention and targeted attraction of traded sector businesses, innovation and entrepreneurship, workforce development, supporting infrastructure development, including broadband, working on a mid-valley regional identity, and continued stakeholder engagement. And we look forward to implementing this as we move forward. Today, we have our new, first meeting with our new board, with several new board members. And I think as we come out of the pandemic, we're looking for kind of exciting ways to get more of our board engaged and particularly the ones that represent, you know, private industry and really get their, take advantage of their knowledge and expertise. Happy to answer any, any questions you may have. Thank you for the time this morning.
I don't have any questions, do you Nick? Oh, go ahead. Okay, you go. Commissioner Willis.
One of the things that I had talked to the other commissioners about recently, Eric, was, and we've talked about this at our executive board meetings, having a study on the impact, basically, of private investment in our community. And I think something that we all know, but I think we want to measure is when, when folks invest in our community, when they build businesses, they build facilities, they hire people, they're generating a lot of economic value. And governments like ours and the school districts, we tax that economic activity, and that goes to fund our police, that goes to pave our roads, that goes to hire teachers and educate our kids. And I think it'd be a really good thing, I mentioned this to our economic development team, we'd like to pursue kind of capturing that value and making sure that people understand that this is not ancillary to the work that we all do together in these other spheres, but it's actually integral to that. And I think one of the things I appreciate about you, Nick, is that you get that and you live it. So, so people could see the businesses that, that we work with actually investing in the community in real time. You know, with the Detroit Civic Center, you actually went and wrangled all the contractors and got them to donate materials so that people could actually see these businesses really do care about our community. They're actually rebuilding a civic center for the community. But even when it's not that visible, that they're still doing that. You know, I know a lot of the family-owned businesses here care deeply about this community and the work that you do, the work that we do on economic development. Is it just about, hey, we want people to make money in Marion County? We do, but it's more than that. It supports kind of the whole infrastructure of our community. And so I guess I'm telling you that I'm going to send our economic development folks your way to help, help with that work to capture that data, because I do think it's important for us to be able to tell that story in numbers, you know, not just pictures.
And Commissioner Willis, as you know, we did talk with at least one educational institution in the area about, that does some work with nonprofits to get some of their students perhaps working on this. And I think one of the things that I learned with that conversation is, at least when it comes to some of the real basic economic impact, when you start to measure with the investment tax revenue, with the new jobs, you know, other revenues that come through as a result of the jobs, plus the multiplier effect in a community, we, you know, we will do a better job of getting that kind of total information out there, which is still somewhat theoretical. It's certainly not like these folks are donating to this project, but at least it gives an idea of what a hundred and forty million dollar project means to a community is, when you start to look at how that actually impacts local government and governments, plural.
Well, some of it's not theoretical, right?
Well, that part isn't.
Like the property taxes, when somebody, you know, does a ten million dollar project or fifteen million dollar project, and we assess whatever it is, three dollars per thousand on that project, we know exactly how much money is coming to.
Yeah, the more theoretical is when you get into the multiplier effect of, you know, I'm, I make money as a result of a new job. I spend that locally. Those businesses spend that locally on other businesses. That's, that's when it gets a little murkier as far as, but it's legitimate, you know, it's because that is the, the real strength in what we do is to see that sort of multiplier effect come through. So yeah, we look, we look forward to getting that information there. It's, you know, the project that I mentioned before, Project Justify, just hearing as they came to the community, you know, we had several conversations about community impact beyond just their investment. And this one company in particular has a logistics system in place that does a great job of, as a, as a food and, among other things, retailer, picking up the, collecting the food that hasn't, hasn't sold before its, you know, due date and getting that to food banks so it can actually get on people's tables before it has to be thrown out. Or, so I think, you know, and then they, and beyond that, their support for food banks and also literacy programs. They were really proud of that, as you might recall during the conversation we had with them. So I think getting that information out with businesses when we start to, you know, promote it, so it's not just jobs and investment, it's not just numbers on a page, but actually, you know, here's what a corporate citizen will mean for this community, I think is really important. It's important for those businesses too.
Thank you. And Nick, I also, I know I kind of mentioned it, but I think one of the things that you do a really good job of, and SEDCOR does a good job of, is connecting private citizens with the government in ways that are collaborative. And I, I want to just encourage SEDCOR in, in that. That's kind of a culture you have, super important. Because before I was a commissioner, interacting with the government is super intimidating, right? It's like, you know, not everybody's had the great, best experiences. Here in Marion County, everyone has wonderful experiences all the time. But, but most of us have had not great experiences interacting with various government agencies. And so to have an organization like yours that can sort of navigate that for people, I think is super valuable.
And a lot of that's due to people like Brian and Brandon, the way they deal with the public.
For sure, yeah, for sure.
There, there is one project I wanted to bring up. Although they're in Lynn County, there's a wood product company up in the canyon. One of their.
What might they be called? There's two of them.
Ferris something.
I mean, there's two, frankly.
They start with F.
Ferris Woods.
They're so fantastic.
I didn't get to go to their hundredth anniversary celebration, yeah.
It was a big wedding.
It was basically, it was amazing.
Pretty slick deal. Nice, nice celebration.
Just being in that plant decorated the way they did it was, it was moving. It was, it was awesome.
Yeah, I'm sure. I got to see pictures. One of the projects, and it relates to what we were just talking about. One of the projects that they were recently involved in, and you may have seen the video, but they were contracted with a company who is repairing a major railroad bridge. And alongside the railroad bridge, they constructed a, another bridge that allowed them to put all their heavy equipment, I mean, cranes, we're talking really heavy equipment. It was, the, the panels were eight feet wide, forty-four feet long, and there were eighty-four of them. And they fit so tight, they didn't have to put visqueen underneath them. But it allowed them to work alongside and do, as we all know, in-water work during the in-water work season. It allowed them to have a crane big enough to hold up sections of that bridge as they worked on it, which I think is, that created all these jobs. It was a major investment on Ferris's part to even do this. And, and they've basically created a whole new market in wood products on their own.
They have created a whole new wood market. In fact, they told us at that celebration that they're building an eight-story building in San Francisco, a hundred percent out of wood.
Yep.
That's profound. And they, there was another building, a structure, I believe in Texas, that they showed us images of that was beautiful. Aside from, we know here locally, the Portland Airport has significant investment of wood product from our community. But they are changing the face of, of wood and how it can be utilized. And I, I would encourage everybody to look into mass plywood paneling and what it does, not just for the, the business sector, but for the environment.
And what they've given back to the community.
Yeah.
Themselves.
Right.
You know, the school district in the canyon, all kinds of projects. Shemecata's ag building.
Right, even later in Salem. Yeah, thanks, Nick. Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. Both of you, thank you for your leadership at SEDCOR and all you do. Nick, I, I know we're all appreciative, but as a resident of Detroit, I really appreciate the community center and all the Rich Dunkins and all those people that did all that. Couple of things that I think is really important is we have an agricultural heritage here in Marion County. We're still the number one ag-producing farm gate county in the state of Oregon out of thirty-six counties. We have the most incorporated cities. I always like to say that. We have twenty incorporated cities, really small ones if you take out the top five or six. And, and the, the future, and we, we also have one of the poorest per capita incomes. And I brought this up in our Public Safety Coordinating Council as we were talking about all these public safety issues. And the, the one way we're going to do this is, what you're talking about here, is to improve people's wealth. The quality of living is by added value to our agricultural community. And having the storage, and one of the questions I wrote down while you were doing your presentation, you mentioned storage for wheat for Yamasa. That's a good example of an added value product that comes out of our commodities here. What would be the cost of that storage? Do we know what the storage, the total value to build that storage? You may, may not need to answer it today. That's okay, but I wrote that question, what is that number so we would know what that investment would take?
I can figure it out.
And that triggered my rural economic development tax credit that we've implemented here in Marion County that, that SEDCOR has taken the lead. And I think we've probably implemented three or four projects.
Six.
Six projects. I think we're the only county that's done that so far. Again, unique to Marion County, and, and that, that is a benefit to our agricultural community. It's outside the, the big cities that that gets taken care of. Thank you for your leadership on that. And then the education you talked about, sounds like Shemecata's there, but that sounds like a really good fit for OSU, right? I mean, all that engineering and that technology and that agriculture. Where's OSU, right? We want to make sure that they're here because we all love OSU. I don't know, that other school, who knows? Okay. And then, and then the last thing, you've mentioned Mill Creek several times, Eric. And we know that Mill Creek's pretty much done. Our economic development department has been working for probably the last four or five years on the Brooks-Hopmare area and, and visualizing that as an added value agricultural processing place with a lot of things that are there. So we're spending money on water resources and all kinds of planning up there, working with ODOT on the interchange. We know that's a twenty-year project, but just wanted to say thank you for all you've done to get, to get Mill Creek filled up. But hey, the future's, we got to have someplace else for this agricultural processing and added value to come to raise the per capita income of every citizen in Marion County so that they have a better quality of life. And appreciate what SEDCOR does to do that.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. And we're excited about the Brooks-Hopmare land coming on, because it has been a challenge for us to, to, you know, find ready-to-go sites. So, you know, we've been looking forward to that coming online. I did want to mention an OSU connection though, that largely as a result of the work that we've been doing around ag innovation and ag tech, we've actually been invited to be part of OSU's Center for Innovation Excellence. You know, they are applying to the state for a planning grant for that. And that's going to be around food and beverage sustainability technologies, and we're a partner in that. So it's, it's exciting for us to be kind of asked to that table. And we've had that question a lot too. How do we engage? You know, OSU is a big, you know, big organization. So once we find people that are sort of like-minded, we kind of glom onto them.
Thank you.
I love that.
Commissioner, the, in fact, the very first industrial, whatever, industrial improvement was in Hopmare.
Oh, the tax, tax. The tax or defer.
It's been two in Brooks-Hopmare.
Abatement, I guess. We're not deferring it. We're, we're giving them three years of income tax or property tax abatement, yeah.
But it was in Hopmare.
Thank you for helping folks navigate that process. Because that's one of those things that you look at the rules and, oh my gosh, just as a private person, I think, how do I even begin to do this process? And you really helped folks in the community navigate that.
Yeah, we should probably add up the money we've saved businesses that have expanded through that program. I don't know what the total is, but I know it's millions of dollars.
It is, and the.
It's in ag, yeah.
And the money that got invested in the community because of that program too.
Right. And then the, then the, then the property taxes that come through three years later as a result of that program. So it's all good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It was a pleasure to see both of you. Thanks, Adam. We'll be seeing you all again.
See you.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Commissioner Cameron, would you please read that?
Ma'am chair, certainly. I'll move the consent agenda, agenda. Under human, Health and Human Services, a proven order increasing the fees referenced in Exhibit A effective January first, twenty twenty-three, and Exhibit B effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and Exhibit C, January first, twenty twenty-five, for the Marion County Health Department for Environmental Health Licensee and Inspection, Licensing and Inspection Activities. Under the Tax Office, a proven order for a property tax refund in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars in. Under the Tax Office, approved an order for a property tax refund in the amount of $28,207.12 for Kerr Concentrate Inc., tax account number 349645.
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And now we'll move on to our first item under action for Board of Commissioners to consider an ordinance referring a measure to the electors to prohibit the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators within unincorporated Marion County. Tanisha and Jane.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tanisha Bush. I am the Government Relations Manager for Marion County. We're here to consider approval of a measure that we refer to the electors to prohibit the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturing and services within our community. Approval of the measure would prohibit the establishment of these facilities within the unincorporated areas of Marion County.
Thank you. Anything changed?
No, this is just a, a second reading of the ordinance for the board considering adoption. If you do adopt and stay, then we will refer to the Clerk's Office for placement on ballot for the general election in November.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'll just reiterate what we said before, the voters in Marion County opposed this when it was on the ballot, and so we're just allowing them to have their voice heard.
Perfect.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I want to make clear, I think I said this last week, but this would not prohibit the city of Salem or any other city within Marion County for allowing this to go forward. This is strictly in the unincorporated areas of Marion County, so outside of city limits. So if, if Salem still wants to do their program, they can do their program, much like the recreational marijuana, which happens within Marion County.
Yeah, so for clarification, any incorporated city that has an elected body of city council can move ahead to choose to, to, to do whatever they want in their incorporated areas, and their citizens can take it up with them.
That's right.
Perfect. Commissioner Willis, would you please make the motion?
I'd be happy to. Madam Chair, I move that the Chair read the ordinance referring a measure to the electors prohibit the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators within unincorporated Marion County by title only twice.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. And I will now read the ordinance by title twice. An ordinance prohibiting the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators within unincorporated Marion County, referral to the electors. An ordinance prohibiting the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators within unincorporated Marion County, referral to the electors. Thank you.
And now, Madam Chair, I would move that we approve an ordinance referring a measure to the electors to prohibit the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators within unincorporated Marion County.
I will second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. So this will now be moved to the Clerk's Office and will be placed on the ballot in November for unincorporated Marion County citizens to vote on. We will now move to our second action item under Public Works to consider approval of the incoming funds American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund Grant Agreement with the Oregon Business Development Department in the amount of $50,000 for the North San Em Canyon Sewer Project through September 1st, 2026. Brian?
Good morning, I'm Brian Nicholas, Marion County Public Works Director. In the 2021 legislative session, the state legislature allocated $50 million to Marion County for the construction of sewer infrastructure up the canyon. And this morning, I'm presenting the funding agreement.
I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing at the fact that I said $50,000 and it's $50 million. And the Commissioner is correcting me. He's like, it's $50 million.
There's a few more zeros.
I actually like that. My kindergarten math is off today, my apologies.
It's been a long time since I've presented one of these kind of presentations.
I bet, so we're in it together.
Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of great photos. It's been kind of busy lately. All right, so the project, the, the purpose of the project is to construct sewer and interseptic improvements up the canyon. So the areas we're talking about are Mill City and Gates, as well as Detroit and Idana, plus some grant funding for rural areas outside city limits affected by the 2020 wildfires. All right, so there are three projects identified in the, or two projects plus some additional funding identified in the agreement. The first is Project A, that's a new sewer system, and, well, new sewer plant and collection system expansion for Mill City. That project would also extend collection to the city of Gates. So a single sewer plant that would serve both the cities of Mill City and the city of Gates. The second project described in the application is for the design of a new sewer plant to serve the cities of Detroit and Idana. The, there's not sufficient funding to build Project B, so the idea would be to get this project staged and ready for, to receive additional funding, ready for construction. There's also some additional funding identified in the funding agreement to help with interim sewer septic solutions. So there is $6 million identified in the agreement for the construction of commercial septic systems for downtown Detroit. We've already started meeting with stakeholders on what the city's needs are on that front, so we're trying to get ready to hit the ground running. It also includes $2 million for a, I'm sorry, got that backwards, $2 million for the construction of septics, commercial septics, and $6 million for residential septic grant program. Here's how the budget breaks down. Of the $50 million, $40 million has been allocated to the Mill City-Gates project, $2 million for the design of the Detroit-Idana sewer system, and then $6 million for commercial septic and $2 million for residential. I did have it right the first time. Sorry about that. All right, and here is just a quick snapshot of the project schedule. Consultant selection is already complete, so the consulting services contractor, just due to manpower limitations within the department, we are consulting out just about everything needed to deliver this project. We do have a project manager coming on board that will be our in-house manager for the program. But just about everything else, we're going to rely on, on a large consultant team to deliver it for us. Consultant selection is complete. Keller Associates is the lead consultant for the project, and we are in the middle of negotiating scope and fee for that work right now. Design and permitting under the agreement must be completed by December 2024, as well as any property acquisition that we do. And then construction must be complete under, by December 2026. And those are deadlines specified in the American Rescue Plan Act legislation. All right, that's the nuts and bolts of the, of the funding agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
So just for clarification, if you, we go back one slide, on the breakdown of the three projects, on the interim septic solutions, you're not really anticipating, are you, for the project completion to be out into 2026 for those smaller projects?
Correct. We're actually, in, those we want to hit as soon as we can. So Keller, their, their consulting agreement, scope of work, we're going to start off with a fast start, scope of services, the things, the balls that we want to get rolling right now. The commercial septic system design and community outreach, because we need to do some stakeholder outreach and figure out exactly what areas will be served and how to configure that system. That is an early start. We hope to have, I hope to be being in, well, the reason why we're starting with an early start is it's something that we can start, the, the contract amount will be small enough, it's under my procurement authority, so we can go ahead and get that fast start work going, and then we'll be bringing the, the larger consultant services contract to the board for approval. I'm hoping we'll be able to give them those to proceed in about two or three weeks on that fast start, scope of services.
And then my last question on residential septic, is the funds, because is it retroactive to be able to help people who had to go through septic upgrades or replacement that are already complete since the fire?
Yes.
So they can apply into like a grant system to be reimbursed basically for their cost?
Yes, it's retroactive to March 2021.
Great.
And who, who qualifies for, for the residential solution? Anybody who lost their home in the fire?
No, we actually, that will be under a program that the county will develop, and it's in development yet, we're still working on some of those details as to what the, what the qualifications will be. It's, it's, it is, you know, legislatively directed to wildfire recovery, so it will be those, those residential properties impacted by the fire. But we need to finish putting together that draft plan and then bringing that to the board for adoption as well. Folks should expect to see only wildfire-impacted properties would be, would be eligible, and there most likely will be a cap on the maximum dollar amount that would be eligible.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner, have any questions, Mr. Roberts?
No, this is good stuff.
Yeah, we're happy it's finally here. It's been a bit. Das is finally letting the money go. It's like, hallelujah.
Well, like I said, we've already done consultant selection. We've done everything, we, we're doing everything we can up until the point where the money needs to be, you know, obligated in, then we can-
That was going to be my comment, just a thank you for pushing, pushing this, getting, not waiting for the state, because we've talked about how frustrating it is that we're two years from the fire and, and we're just now getting this agreement-
Right.
-you know, done, but you haven't waited. You know, you've been, you've hired the console and you've done as much work as we could before we actually got the money in hand. And I also want to thank you because I think I, you know, this is a big project. This is $50 million. This is something that has to work. And if we didn't have the confidence in your team and your leadership that we have, competent engineers and folks that know how to manage these projects, I think we would be in a much more difficult position to, to deliver this type of a project at this scale. I mean, this is, we're a pretty big county, but even for us, you know, a $50 million project is, is a pretty big project and a lot of moving pieces, and I'm confident we're going to get there. I'm confident that you and your team can do it, and I think it's pretty exciting for this community that 2026, we're going to have construction. And I know that if, before I was a Commissioner, I would have been like, geez, Louise, how long are we waiting to get this thing done? But now that I've seen just how hard this process is, getting the money, you know, putting this thing together, it's-
Well, it's been a conversation for like a decade.
I say it a little bit-
Like, you know, what's a couple more years?
Madam Chair, I say it a little bit differently.
You're still hoping to be alive.
If I'm alive when the first toilet flushes, yeah.
You will be, you will be. We'll all line up on your streets to use it.
In all seriousness, I, I do want to thank the legislature and the governor, and I know the wildfire recovery committee-
Yeah, Brian Clem and Judy Christensen.
Brian Clem, all those people over there that really worked hard, and we, we know how, how that process works, and the money's just coming here now. But, you know, this, this is really, this is a gift.
It's a big deal.
This is a really big deal for the canyon and their recovery, and that place will look so different 10, 20 years from now after this gets done, so, yeah.
I, I do also want to just recognize Community Services, our own Community Services Department, because this project would not be staged and ready to receive this funding to take the next huge leap if not for all the work that Community Services has done over the years. All, so much of it's speculative, just, you know, you do this work trying to get something this large ready to go, you don't know where the money's going to come from. This, you know, this, this came about because the project was ready for it.
And it's going to have a generational impact there. I mean, holy moly, is, is that a big deal?
Yeah. Thank you, Brian. Commissioner Cameron, would you make the motion?
I'd be happy to, for $50 million. Consider, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, State Fiscal Recovery Fund Grant Agreement with Oregon Business Development Department in the amount of $50 million and no pennies for the North San Em Canyon Sewer Project through September 1st, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Brian, have a good day. All right, and I will now pause the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting and move into a public hearing. Thank you all for patiently waiting. The public hearing is to consider amending the Marion County Rural Zone Code to permit an event business as a home occupation. Brandon and Lindsay, or maybe just Lindsay. Oh, there's Brandon.
Good morning. Look at all my paper situated.
I'm with you. I'm doing the same thing.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Lindsay King, Marion County Planning. On April 15th of this year, staff met with the board and interested citizens to discuss a code that permits home occupations on farmland. The board directed staff to work with stakeholders to develop the code that were, that would permit the event business on home, as a home occupation. Staff has met with the stakeholders and developed a draft code. On June 29th of this year, the board initiated consideration of the amendment to our zoning code. The code includes many health and safety measures, not just for the property owner, but for surrounding property owners, including standards for traffic and parking, as well as signage for events. The property owners will be required to obtain all health department permits associated with event businesses, food and potable water, as well as other required permits such as serving alcohol. Additionally, the property owner must provide evidence that the required permits are being renewed, whether this be annually or whatever they require. Structures, new and existing, will be used for the event business, and they will be required to meet applicable building, septic, and fire codes to ensure that the buildings are safe for customers at the property. The code is designed to minimize the event business's impact on neighboring property owners while still being able to operate as an event business as a home occupation. The code includes standards for fencing, landscape buffers, lighting, and noise, in addition to parking. And this is in order to minimize any potential impact on the neighboring properties. The maximum number of events is, in one year, is limited to 18, and this number was chosen to coincide with the maximum number allowable for agritourism events annually. The maximum number of participants is 750. Larger events must obtain a mass gathering permit from Marion County. The code requires that the contracts for the events contain language about compatibility with surrounding resource uses of the land, including farming. Finally, the event business home occupation would be approved only for the property owner applying initially, unless the subsequent property owner reviews and accepts the conditions that are, that are placed on the operation of the business. To ensure that the home occupation business continues to meet the qualifications for a home occupation, the property owner must be the occupant of the property and the business operator, as well as the requirements to be receiving special farm assessment, ensuring that the land where the event business takes place is being farmed and a part of the local farming community. The event business must take place substantially indoors, but may use tents. The tents are considered outdoors for the purposes of this code. By requiring the event to take place primarily indoors, neighboring properties will be less likely to be affected by the events, and the customers of the event business will be less likely to be affected by any farm or forest uses within the area. When the event is not taking place, any items associated with the events will have to be stored inside so as not to alter the appearance of the property to something other than a home site. With that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thanks, Lindsay. Commissioner, do you have any questions for Lindsay?
Well, I do, just because we got some written comments and-
Of course.
They, I was, they didn't seem, some of the, and I think some of the folks that maybe commented weren't, don't, don't quite understand how it all works together, so I'd like some clarification. So one of, one of the comments was that an applicant could host three events that involve attendees coming and going to and from the property every single day of the week. But our code says you can have three a week, three events per week in the summer, and then one event per week in the winter, the total not to exceed 18 events, right?
That's correct.
So it would not be possible to have three events every single day of the week, right?
Not unless you have a nine-day, uh, week. No.
Right, okay, so I just want-
We can catch it on our theme.
I just wanted to clarify that. And then there were some comments about 750 people and some concern about that. 750 is the mass gathering limit, right? So the reason that that is there is to, to make it super clear to everybody that this is not a mass gathering.
Correct. So the 750-person threshold is when it would trigger a mass gathering permit and would no longer qualify for the home occupation event business.
Right.
The limit to the number of people is also dictated by the occupancy of the structure that the home occupation is being, that's being utilized.
Because 80% of the event has to take place inside.
That's correct. So if your occupancy is 100 people in your accessory building or your barn, then you're limited to 100 people.
You're not allowed to have 750 people.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner, do you have any questions?
No, not this time. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay.
All right, we are going to go on to, well, usually we do the applicant's presentation, but we're just going to go on to support of this particular ordinance. And the first person signed up in support is Christina McNitt. Good morning. For the record, would you introduce yourself? Give us your residence and county.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Bepo, Commissioners Willis and Cameron and staff. For the record, my name is Christina McNitt. I reside in East Marion County in the city of Dayton, and I'm here to voice strong support of legislative amendment 2233. Today, conditional use review criteria in Marion County Code specifically prohibits the use of structures accessory to resource use in our parlance, barns, on high-value farmlands in conjunction with a home occupation. Further, weddings are specifically disallowed under the county's agritourism ordinances except if conducted in conjunction with farm activities. These limitations are more restrictive than other county sectors, excuse me, other counties, and serve as an impediment to local flourishing wedding event businesses. LA 2233 provides a legal pathway for hosting weddings and similar functions on resource lands in our county. The code language maintains a general prohibition on the use of barns for existing types of home occupations, but adds a new home occupation section that narrowly contemplates event businesses, quote, "hosting weddings, family reunions, class reunions, company picnics, memorials and similar gatherings." Appropriately, the amendment also creates significant standards for operating an event business that include limiting time and frequency, requiring building and life safety code retrofit upgrades, requiring traffic control and parking plans, and minimizing conflicts of use with neighboring farm operations. As someone whose household income is solely derived from farming, so I'm one of four percent of Oregonians that can meet that criteria, this is particularly important to me. And the group that worked over the past few months to develop this amendment language spent a large amount of time debating how to balance new economic opportunity with protecting the production capacity of impacted resource lands. And this includes both the neighboring farm operations as well as those ag operations conducted by venue operators themselves. The concept before you this morning was never meant, nor does it support an unrestricted opportunity to repurpose resource lands into event centers. Does not do that. Rather, the concept is limited and specifically targeted to provide a complementary income and business opportunity for agriculturalists, particularly those with smaller acreages subject to smaller and smaller margins, poor economies of scale and limited market opportunities for products. Very often, it's these smaller parcels that come with the older farm home and the legacy barn structures, but not the acreage that supports them. In fact, according to the US, the latest USDA Census of Agriculture, forty-six percent of farms in Marion County, forty-six percent of farms in Marion County, enjoy a total sales value of twenty-five hundred dollars a year. While that may help pay property taxes, I can guarantee it's no way to keep farm ground in farm production over the long haul. I refer you to seven key elements in the amendment language that were drafted for the express purpose of balancing an economic development opportunity with resource protection. First, farm use assessment. The subject property where an event business will operate has to be subject to farm use assessment. Secondly, the number of events has been limited to a maximum of eighteen a year. Third, the outdoor area, you've heard at least eighty percent of the event business shall be indoors, not including parking. Other uses, the event business shall not unreasonably interfere with other uses permitted in the zone in which the property is located. Number five, and I'm going to read this specifically. The property owner shall provide evidence that all contracts, so all contracts with your bride and groom couple shall include the requirement that the customer has signed and agreed to the following statement. This event business is situated in or near a farmer forest zone or area in Marion County, Oregon, where the intent is to encourage and minimize conflicts with farm and forest use. Specifically, residents, property owners and visitors may be subjected to common customary and accepted farm or forest management practices conducted in accordance with federal and state laws that ordinarily and necessarily produce noise, dust, smoke and other impacts. I do hereby accept the potential impacts from farm and forest practices as normal and necessary and part of the risk of using this venue. I acknowledge the need to avoid activities that conflict with nearby farm and forest uses and practices, and I will not pursue a claim for relief or course of action alleging injury from farming or forest practices for which no action is allowed under ORS 3936 or 3937. Those are our state right to farm and forest laws. Two other elements, the transfer of property, you heard that from staff, that the approval goes with the operator, not with the property. And the last, that annually these event operators have to submit to the county certain documentation that they're meeting their requirements. Given the three-minute time restriction, which I'm sure I've already abused, I'm going to abstain from sort of the key policy thoughts behind all of those elements, but I'm happy to expand on them if you have questions. In short, I believe this amendment language is progressive and protective, and I would go so far as to say that it's pro-land use. I'd like to acknowledge the county planning staff who facilitated the effort in a way that was thoughtful, arduous and professional. And it's my opinion that the language before you represents a really good balance of interest, protecting our state's unique land use system, protecting Marion County's farm gate value, and inviting Oregonians to engage on our farms and our livelihoods and our heritage in a very contemporary manner. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will now move on to what I think is written Jill Rodriguez Lopez. Okay. Some folks write more like pharmacists than others.
Mine's gonna be less than three minutes.
Okay, you can hand it to Jane and she'll pass it down. Thanks. All right, for the record, please introduce yourself and note the residence you come from.
Okay, so I'm Jill Rodriguez. I live in northern Marion County on ten acres that is exclusive farm use. I'm the premier plant rental business here in the Willamette Valley, and I'm support of the amendment. It not only supports the economic development in our local event industry, but allows a continuation of agriculture and farm use. This allows those of us that struggle making an income off just our farming an additional option. There's a big difference between small farms like me and big farm operations that have access to many more resources. In the real world, not everyone's property that is designated as exclusive farm use has the ability to make a living income off just their land. Many factors come into play, such as soil and water availability on their specific land. This amendment gives me and many others in the same situation the chance to increase our income as well as providing unemployment to others in the county, which in turn helps out Marion County by increased tax revenue. Thank you for everybody. That's what I wanted to say.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And Zach Thomas.
Good morning. My name is Zach Thomas. I'm the founder of Apogee. We're a local events company here, started in Salem in 2006. And I came this morning to express my support for this in the biggest way that I possibly can. A lot of my time kind of growing up, developing this company, this business, I've visited a lot of these private properties, which are amazing for events, don't have neighbors, some of them do. But what we're looking at with eighteen weddings a year is a shortage of supply of inventory. And I, we can talk about, you know, property use rights or whatever else. I don't, I want to ignore that. But I want to bring, let's bring this back to the couples who are being served in the overall wedding industry. Right now, the average cost of a wedding is about thirty thousand dollars for a young couple. This places a pretty high burden of debt on young people that are trying to start their families, do things well. We have the available inventory of private property venues here all over the county, which are great event businesses. This will bring in an influx, not just to the business owner themselves, but this opens up the inventory and the supply to our couples. When we're limiting down to eighteen events a year, but they can do a hundred, you know, a couple a week. It's more, probably more in the summer than in the winter, for sure. This is going to open up the actual economic chain for these couples to have a lower venue fee. Right now, if you're trying to find a venue, good luck. There's just not an inventory from them because they're limited to this supply. They can only do so many. They can't do Friday, Saturday, Sunday weddings. And when they can't, that Saturday price goes up immensely. And so they have to pass that on to their clients. And one of these things that is kind of my, over the last couple of years, I've, since the pandemic, obviously that wasn't good for the single owner operators in the events world. And now there are, a lot of venues have gone out of business entirely. They just weren't able to make it. So we have the availability for the supply chain, and we have new owners, operators that are ready to do these things. We just need to be able to open it up, relax it, make sure that everybody's respectful of everybody and the neighbors, and that of course that the farm is being attended and it's not growing into a giant resort for, you know, for the weddings destinations. We definitely need to be able to respect that. But if we're able to open this up, we can, I believe, bring down the cost of weddings or at least limit the low supply chain availability when we have, excuse me, when there's been basically the events business has been closed for the better part of two years and we're finally open up now. But if we can open that for these couples, that can hedge us against some of the twenty percent inflation we've seen over the last couple of years as well. And this will be a very big economic boom, I believe, for the events business right here in our county where we just have tons of property. It's beautiful out here and we can do this.
Thanks, Zach. Mark Nichols.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, staff and attendees. My name is Mark Nichols and I live at 10067 Sigmund Road, southeast Dayton, Oregon, east Marion County and on the site of Historic Heater Farm, established in the late 1800s. My wife is fourth generation to farm this property along with our son, who will be our fifth generation. So I'm reading testimony today, actually prepared by my wife, Sue, who is one of the stakeholders that worked with the county planning staff to help develop the draft code. Unfortunately, she could not be here today. Here is her statement. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for their support, along with instructing the planning staff to work with us and other stakeholders to create an updated rural zone code that would allow an event business to operate as a home occupation. I also appreciate all the effort by Marion County planning staff along with advice from the county legal staff to ensure our draft code would contain all appropriate county standards. I am here in favor of the Commissioners amending the Marion County Rural Zone Code with the legislative amendment 22003 to permit an event business as a home occupation in the EFUSA and FT zones. I've been in economic development for many years, including Director of the State and Sublimity Chamber of Commerce, the Community Development Director for Travel Salem, as well as a small business owner located in Dayton. I know that this new code would have a strong economic impact for Marion County within the many hospitality sectors that are around the event venue business. The Historic Heater Farm, like many other large farms from the past, have been parceled off over the years to become only small to medium-sized farms. Also, many were left with the outbuildings that were functional for large farms but are no longer needed for the downsized farms. This is why it's important to develop non-traditional income sources like renovating these barns, historic heritage structures to be safe for public use, for events to supplement regular farming income. That way, we will ensure these heritage farms will still be here for our future generations.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. And Edna, excuse me, Edna Graham.
My name's Edna Graham, and myself and my husband, Tony Graham, are here. And we have a Christmas tree farm. Oh, first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here, and thanks to all of you. We have a Christmas tree farm and we are located in east Marion County. We have been raising Christmas trees and selling Christmas trees, both wholesale and retail, for the past thirty-two years. We have a twenty-acre parcel of land, and we grow about seven acres worth of Christmas trees on our property. That's about all the farmable property that we have on our twenty acres. And then we also lease, for our business, we also lease other parcels of land also too for growing Christmas trees in the Willamette Valley. We are in support of this amendment because we believe that the interests, that the interests of the farmers should be protected as well as support for other non-traditional business opportunities on local farm properties. We think that these local farms would benefit by providing additional ways to provide income for their families and utilize and share the heritage of some of the amazing land and buildings in our area. We live in such a different era of time. Right now, over the past forty years, things have changed a lot. We have a tremendous amount of mental health issues in our communities. And from our own experience, we've seen so many of our friends, and sorry if I get emotional because this is a really big thing, big deal to me. They come to our place to get away from the stresses of craziness of life. They come out and enjoy our farm, our property, our animals and the little bit of farming that we do on our property. They love the scenery and the animals and the whole experience of country life. We've found that these experiences bring our community members a piece of our heritage that helps with grounding and bringing a little more sunshine into the lives of those in our community. In our experience, it has motivated people out of their homes, gets kids and adults out of their virtual worlds and into a healthy, productive atmosphere for a short time. So to provide these types of experiences for our community and allow the farming community some new opportunities to utilize their farms and property, we believe this is a really good thing and also so needed in this new world that we live in. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank you for being here. We will now move on to citizens in opposition. The first one signed up is Eileen Kay. Did you enjoy the fair?
Yes.
I saw her at the fair. We were both shopping.
My name is Eileen Kay. I live in south Marion County, an unincorporated area because we have horses. I am not here representing any group. These are my personal views. I am against the legislative amendment 22-03, which would allow event businesses to be considered a home occupation. So I am asking you to not amend this code. I think to allow the amendment would further erode the protection of farmland and the ability of farmers to move their goods to market. The types of events which would be allowed have often led to trespass, damage to neighboring farm property, drunkenness, noise, car accidents, blockage of roads, et cetera. To me, adopting this amendment would defy common sense. Unfortunately, I feel fear that you will vote to amend the code. I didn't even know about the committee or anything, that there was a committee. But I have attended and watched your land use hearings this year, and you have consistently voted against your own, not in this case, against your own planning staff, attorney. uh, against your own planning staff, attorney, hearings officer, and the majority of citizens who testified at the hearings. You have been voting to allow whatever the applicant wants in spite of the fact the allowed use violated local codes and state law. Proof of this is in the recent cases you have approved that you had to have known would end up in court and resulted in the county losing cases. Your votes have cost thousands of tax dollars and wasted the time of your own staff members and several citizens of Marion County, including me, who would rather be doing other things. Uh, your votes on recent land use cases seem to show little concern for Oregon's land use laws. If you change the nature of our county by allowing these large events under the guise of a home occupation, you are continuing your march toward further urbanization and similar to what happened in California. And this is urbanizing some of the best farmland in the United States. And while I was listening to previous testimony, I'm also getting worried now about people who do have farms and are raising something and they make so much money off of these events that they aren't going to want to farm it anymore and they're going to try to get it out of EFU. Anyway, that's just a fear that I got while listening to the previous testimony. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for being here. Uh, another in opposition is Bruce and I apologize, I can't bring, I cannot conjure up the last name. I cannot. Chapin? Okay. Bruce Chapin.
Good morning. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Bruce Chapin, farm just north of Kaiser, uh, third generation in that area. Address 9965 Wheatland Road North, Salem, Oregon 97303. I've attached a copy of the, uh, relevant page of the Oregon Farm Bureau 2022 Policy Book. It's your, the last page I, and it's what I stapled here for you and highlighted the, the key points that are relevant to this issue. Uh, what you see there is a very strong statement against additional uses in farm use land, or EFU land. And there's also a, a section in there that speaks specifically to weddings and, and other events. I want to back up just a little bit about Farm Bureau. It's a very democratic organization, the way it's formed, the way it operates. Uh, once a year, we have an annual meeting. We have a House of Delicates that goes through the entire policy book and, uh, looks at each of the policies and adjusts them accordingly. Land use has been an issue that at times we have some very good debates about. And when we get done with the debates, we have a vote. And historically, what we've seen is usually a two to one vote in favor of preserving farmland.
Thank you, Bruce, for the, the background on that. But would you speak specifically to this topic today at hand?
Yes, because, because this policy is to this. My apologies.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. The bottom line is, in summary, uh, Oregon Farm Bureau membership is strongly in favor of land use planning and, and not expanding it.
Are you here representing the Oregon Farm Bureau?
I serve on the State Board, the Oregon Farm Bureau.
Well, I understand that, but are you here representing them?
I have not formally came here to, no, I am here representing myself.
Okay, thank you.
But I want you to know what the policy is.
Well, if they want to make a statement as an official organization, they should do that. If you have one as a citizen, I'd be happy to continue to listen.
I would love to.
Thank you.
Okay. Commercial events are not a, a good fit for being included in the home occupation use. Uh, one major criteria for a home occupation is no retail sales and very limited number of people coming and going to the house. And in contrast, what's being proposed here is up to 750 retail customers per day coming and going. Those customers may not be paying the entry fee themselves, but somebody is paying it and the event center will be focused on serving those 750 customers in exchange for money. In this way, the event sense center is much like any other retail business and should not be considered a home occupation. The proposed 750 people per day is a ridiculously large number. Now I'll let that go. The amendment allows 18 events per year with a maximum of three events per week, with each event being up to three days long, which creates a potential for 54 days in a row. Uh, farmers need to be able to raise and harvest crops without having to alter their schedules to avoid conflicts with an event center. Many farmers would try to accommodate their neighbors, but would, would not be, not likely be able to do so when, when they're scheduled with so many days in a row. And that potential is there throughout the summer. If, uh, a gathering wants to use a facility for three days, I would think that should be counted as three events. Your events are, go from seven in the morning till 10 at night and then you, then you say an event can be three days long. The requirement that the event, uh, permit only be a temporary one, one-year permit, resembles the Marion County Code on approving farm labor camps. However, it fails to require that all buildings constructed for the event be designed, uh, to have an alternate beneficial use for the farm and that the, and that they can be constructed close to the owner's residence like is required for labor camps. And I think those, those things should be added if you go forward with this.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the temporary print permit should clearly state that the county has a right not to renew the permit if there is evidence of a conflict with farm businesses, forest businesses, the neighborhood, or if the applicant property no longer meets the criteria for the farm use assessment. I, I don't think it was strong enough the way it's written on that. Uh, indoor space needs to be better defined and limited to a building with a roof, walls, windows and doors so as to protect the participants from farm dust, noise and odors. An open air structure with shade roof is popular for summer events, but will do little to minimize the conflicts with agriculture. Uh, all new event structures should have the same required minimum setbacks from the property lines as other non-farm buildings. A common saying is fences make good neighbors and in a similar way, large setbacks also make good neighbors and a combination of setbacks and fences makes even better neighbors. I am sincerely concerned about the farmer or farm employee getting physically assaulted in response to a dust, a drift. To help prevent this, we need to have at least a six-foot-high fence around the event area, unless there is at least a 660-foot, which is an eighth of a mile, setback from the property lines, which would be very reasonable. The larger the setbacks, the less need there is for the fence. But the boundaries of the, of the event area still need to be defined so that, so the attendees know where, where they're supposed to be at. Although farming practices are often smelly, noisy and dusty, farmers should have the right to farm without fear of some impulsive event attendee or organizer attacking a farmer or employee for making dust, noise and odors. And I want to thank you for your support of the Agriculture Committee, I really, or the Agriculture Community. I really enjoyed the, the presentation that Sencor made and what the work they're doing and thank you for that.
Thank you.
And we happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
You bet.
Thank you, Bruce.
Roger K. Oh, there. I see movement behind the pillar. That's fair. Try sitting on this side of the table. They're hot too.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Roger K., current president. Excuse me, of Friends of Marion County. Friends of Marion County is an independent 501(c)(3) farmland protection organization founded in 1998. Our mission is to protect farm and forest land parks and open space. We pose and request denial of legislative amendment for events as home occupation in the EFUS, A and FT zones. Uh, Friends of Marion County submitted a letter dated today, but we submitted it earlier in opposition to the proposed legislative amendment to permit events as a home occupation in the EFUS, A and FT zones. The proposed changes to the rural zone code conflict with the use of these zones, protect them from a home occupation for events up to 750 persons, 18 times per year during the important planting and harvesting season in Marion County, and most important, industrial use in Marion County, providing income to more than 5,000 farmers on 288,000 acres and jobs for thousands of farm workers. Farm sales in Marion County for 2017 amounted to $71.5 million. Uh, in year two, in year 2000, a blueberry cafe was closed because it operated a full-service inside restaurant that overflowed its septic system with kitchen waste with violations of farm use and health standards. In 2013, conditionally used 12, that is 028, was approved for a horse racing event for 500 persons that was approved by the Board of Commissioners reversing the hearings officer's decision. The applicant was found in violation of the permit, which was then denied the following year. And finally, in 2018, Marion County denied a mass gathering permit for the Barmark Country Music Festival that would have caused significant traffic problems for local farmers during the peak harvest season. Uh, this amendment seeks to circumvent these permitting issues by removing standards that protect farm uses. Small mass gathering permits between 750 and 3,000 persons, agro-tainment, agro tourism permits, farm stand and commercial activities in conjunction with farm use all require hearings to substantiate that activity will not adversely affect farm uses. This amendment allows an applicant to establish an event business as a home occupation catering up to 750 persons 18 times per year, but does not protect neighboring, neighboring farm uses. The 1983 legislature passed and Governor T. assigned House Bill 2625, which allowed home occupation on EF zone lands because the bill supported smaller businesses, commonly known as cottage industries, that, that got their start in garages and later grew and expanded beyond their home to move to larger operations loaded in, inside cities. Marion County has since added other provisions to protect farm uses. However, the change up to 750 persons at an event then permitted as a home occupation far exceeds the intent of the 1983 legislature in crafting the law. The amendment specifies the number of employees at no more than five full-time or part-time persons at any one time. And then I have a short section from the code. In Green versus Douglas County, Lubbock case 2012092, under the, our interpretation and application, whatever the persons who come onto the site to execute the authorized events are called for the purposes of ORS 215, they are full-time or part-time persons who are employed by the applicant named Hester. In simple terms, Lubbock concluded that five full-time or part-time employees executing the authorized events at one time are the total number of employees that are permitted, whether the applicant employs them or they are employees of a contractor. It is impossible then to conclude that an event opening up to 750 persons can be managed by five employees. For the reasons given above, Friends of Marion County poses this amendment and urges the county to reject it. And second two pages, I've, uh, included the census of agriculture from Marion County, which provides some of the data I mentioned in my comments.
Thank you, Roger. Next, Kathleen, is it Cart?
Carl.
Carl.
Yeah.
Thank you. One of these days I will get down to mastery of understanding everyone's.
I probably wrote it badly.
It's like a signature. I'm working on it.
Kathleen Carl, 407 21st Street, Northeast Salem, Oregon. Thank you for this opportunity. I am a co-owner of a 475 acre farm in Hubbard, Oregon, which we've had for 107 years. It's now being managed by the fourth generation and she's raising the fifth generation to run it. I do, uh, I am on the Marion County Farm Bureau Board, but I, um, I'm not talking, uh, I'm speaking as an individual. I'd like to say that, uh, I do believe everyone here has the best intentions for farming. And so, uh, when we disagree, I think it's just that we see what the best intentions are differently. So, thank you, everyone. Uh, first, and I am opposed to, um, LA 22-003. First, home occupations are meant to be small businesses, almost invisible on a farm. And when they get too large, which means more than five employees, they're meant to move into town and expand. It's a way to, uh, so. Second, I think with the best, um, with the best intentions, when you start bringing tons of people together, you can't control 150 to 300 people, especially not 750 people who don't always appreciate, um, farms or rural neighbors because there's lots of rural neighbors, um, that are not farmers and, uh, when they've been drinking. We used to have a, a place by our farm out in Hubbard that, uh, would have wedding, uh, there and there would be beer cans in the culverts and on our neighbor's land. So another time a neighbor had a band and the cows in our bottom land, we have upland and bottom land, were tearing up and down the field. Luckily, they didn't go through the fences and everyone, and no one was hurt. But, um, I do think that this could be something, I understand the small farms, but I also see that it would be hard to do it with only five people. I think the idea of having a three-day for putting up, taking down, uh, just expands the time that a people there. I think that should be restricted. I think there's no way it should go up to 750 people. That, to me, there's no way you can control 750 people. Also, um, parking, under items five and six under parking, it says, "Events that take place between October 1 and April 30," that's lesser popular times, "shall have parking provided with an all-weather surface consisting of gravel, asphalt or concrete." So how much parking are you going to have to have for 750 people? That's made that, to me, that means you're taking up a lot of farmland with gravel, asphalt or concrete. Anyway, third, I think this kind of operation should be, uh, looked under agritourism or some other thing making amendments there because, uh, not home occupation. I think it's changing the whole, uh, aspect of home occupation. It was meant for small, inobtrusive business that's, uh, employed five people. Thank you. I hope you'll consider my thoughts. I hope you realize how overreaching I think this amendment is and, um, not put it into force. Also, I just noticed on all the stakeholders, who were the stakeholders that opposed this? Are there any stakeholders that were in these meetings that didn't believe in this? Because I was never asked, Bruce was never asked. We're both farmers on the Marion County Farm Bureau Board. So, just saying. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the opportunity.
Yeah. Have a good day. Uh, Laurel Heinz.
Morning.
Hello. My name is Laurel Heinz and I live at 10371 Lake Drive Southeast in Salem, off of Liberty Road, um, near the crossroad of Ankeny Hill Road, out near the Ankeny Refuge. And I, I live in an area that's owned acreage residential, I believe. And we, um, where I live, there's, there's another, there's actually three areas near me that are hilled, hilled and ravined and very, uh, very forested and brushy. And a number, most, most of us have, uh, one and a half to five, sometimes larger acreages. And a lot of people have horses or cows or sheep on their small acreages. Not everybody, but a, a number of people do. And it seems to me that every time the county seems to, um, consider something that would affect the many and distress the many and inconvenience the many and benefit the few, it happens in the summer when people aren't paying attention. I, I spoke to a number of my neighbors and almost none of them know about this amendment being considered. And some of them would have liked to be here, but they were traveling. I was traveling and didn't think I'd be able to be here, but ended up leaving a trip early. And I, I really think that these events, um, endanger acreage residential zones like mine, similar to what the Barmark Music Festival would have done a few years ago. When that was proposed, I think that was also brought. When that was proposed, I think that was also brought up in the summer, but a number of our people around us, besides the farmers, most of the farmers were upset about it. And a number of my neighbors came and people from our area protested it and a lot of people said, you know, that, once the word got out, a lot of people were very concerned about it. And luckily, the commissioners realized that the country roads out there with farm equipment on them and the narrow windy roads with dry brush on the sides and the risk, it was the year that the worst fires, I think it was when that, you know, some of the, I think it was the Paradise Fire in California burned up a community very similar to ours in some respects.
Laurel, I apologize for interrupting, but can you shift your testimony to this specific topic that we're discussing today?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. These events, we have several big farm properties near us, one of which is supposedly a horse ranch and is, got approved and nobody has ever seen a horse on there. Anyway, we're concerned about these events because even if there were only 500 people showing up at these events, what about the cars involved, all traveling on these country roads, people unfamiliar with these country roads, facing big farm equipment that we all often have to go over to the side of the road to let pass because you can't fit the big farm equipment plus a car on the other side? That there is not only the fire risk, but there's the trespassing risk. A lot of us moved to this, to these areas expecting helicopters, you know, harvesting Christmas trees, we expected goose guns, which we hear every fall, we expected dust and possible livestock issues, we sometimes have cows escaping near us. But nobody expected rows of porta-potties, nobody expected, you know, up to 500 cars or something driving into a property every, possibly every weekend with 18 events a year. I think a lot of people are going to be very upset with the county if this passes to find out that you considered up to 750 people in an event as a home occupation. Most people consider home occupations smaller things. An example of that was recently out not too far from us, a dog breeding kennel was approved and there were lots of limits on that. Like, I think they can only have certain, I can't remember the number, but I think it was like 12 adult females or something like that. But anyway, those are, those are what people would consider to home occupation, not a big event with drunken people coming over to other people's properties or, you know, fires starting, big parking lots. And even if they park on the grass, that creates a fire risk. So, I really think this is poorly thought out. I think it's going to penalize a lot of people that live nearby. I just don't think you've considered all the risks and the uproar that this could cause. Eighteen events a year could be every single weekend or several times a week in the summer months, and that is going to be a big, big disruption to not only the farm and farming, but to people that live in areas near farm properties. I guess that's all, but I urge you to really think this through and deny this. I think it's going to create a lot of problems for a lot of people.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Marlene Meyer.
Meyer.
Meyer, thank you.
Excuse me.
I need a support crew to our farm, so this is going to be one of my many jobs I have. I'd like to read what he wrote this morning since he couldn't come and quickly put together his thoughts. He said, "Good morning, my name is George Meyer. Our farm is GM Meyer Farms located in the Jefferson area. I am here today to ask you to deny the proposed request to allow the event in farm zones. First, I want to say that the hearing being scheduled the first week of August is very troubling. Harvest season is in full swing. It is unfortunate that the people most affected by this request are unable to attend. Could this be part of the plan? Only a few years ago, the Willamette Country Music Festival proposed a mass gathering in our area. Thankfully, the commissioners denied the request and recognized the need to allow farmers to farm. The music festival only pertain to a small area in Marion County, while this request could affect thousands of acres over the entire Marion County." I think most of, I think most every time, I think most events would happen in the spring, summer, or fall, the same time the farmers are trying to bring their crop to harvest. Just trying to move farm equipment has been increasingly dangerous. Only a few weeks ago on a Sunday afternoon while moving three swathers, two cars passed us on a double yellow line in a blind corner. Thankfully, they didn't meet another car head-on. And I'm also very concerned about fire danger. As the temperatures rise, the grass becomes drier and more dangerous. The farmer is very careful about the type of vehicle they allow to drive in the field. Just this year, I purchased an additional 17 fire extinguishers to add to the farm vehicles and shops. An unknowing driver could accidentally start a fire by just driving into a dry field or parking alongside a road. In our Jefferson Fire District, in 2001, there were 60 volunteers in that fire department. In the year 2022, Jefferson Fire District only has approximately 20 volunteers. I am concerned that there will be no checks and balances to protect the farmer. Please stand tall and protect the farmers of Marion County. Thank you very much, George Meyer."
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anybody else signed up on the list. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to provide testimony? Okay, thanks. Brandon and Lindsay, would you please come forward? Commissioners, Commissioner Willis has some pages, so if you might, we start with him.
Go ahead.
Okay. Brandon and Lindsay, I just want to ask, first to clarify a question. Were any of the meetings that we had leading up to this, private meetings? They were all public, right? We had two work sessions and they were both publicly noted?
The board meetings, the staff meeting, staff meetings were not public meetings. They could have been, but they weren't.
Right, but the staff meetings were at the direction of the board, right? We had two public work sessions where we noticed them publicly and then we gave you direction to work on this with the people that showed up at those meetings, right?
Correct.
And we invited everybody who showed up to those meetings, we invited to work with staff, right?
Correct.
We didn't say, "Don't invite, these people don't, that are at this meeting, don't let them come." Just the people we like, right? So, we publicly noticed the meetings and we invited everybody who came to work with you, right?
Correct.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to ask is, this is not a as-of-right use, right? So, like, if I had a farm and I wanted to host a wedding on my farm pursuant to this home occupation, I would have to go through a conditional use process, right?
Correct.
And every year, that would have to be recertified under these rules, right?
Every year additional, the recertification evidence is provided, and if they're not meeting the conditions or they're not able to meet the conditions, the planning director can revoke the conditional use and that can go to a hearing and then it can appeal to the board.
And have you ever revoked a conditional use before?
Occasionally.
And why do you revoke conditional uses?
Conditions aren't being met and there's no evidence that they are able to meet the conditions.
And in this case, one of the conditions, the main condition is that it's not going to interfere with neighboring property.
That's correct.
So, if someone were to get a conditional use and they started interfering with neighboring property, would you continue to allow that person to have that conditional use?
We'd work with the neighbors, we'd work with the property owner with the application to identify ways to address that conflict. And if it's not possible to address the conflict or there's unwillingness to address the conflict, then we could revoke.
And then, is this having events in EFU zone, are there any other venues where you can currently have events in EFU zone, even if we didn't enact this ordinance? Like, for instance, wineries? Are people able to have weddings at wineries?
Wineries have provisions, breweries have the same provisions. Grain halls, if they're still operating, some public zones, occasionally there's a structure there, although it's very rare.
And are there any limits on the, on the number of weddings you can have at a winery?
There are limits, they're similar to what we have, but I don't recall exactly.
Okay. So, if we were to adopt this, we wouldn't actually be changing whether or not you can have weddings in EFU zone. We would just be allowing people who don't have wineries to have the same rights as people who do, right?
Who don't have wineries but have farm use on their property would be able to have...
So, like, if I have an orchard right now, I can't have a wedding in my barn, but if I have a winery, I can't have a wedding in my barn, right?
That's correct.
Do you think that, well, sorry. I don't think that's fair to the people growing apples or Christmas trees. I'll make that statement, I won't ask you to make that statement. Okay, those are the questions I have.
Yes, sir.
Well, the only thing I want to say is that I heard three references to the Bymark Music Festival. I was here when we made that decision. This is not the Bymark Music Festival where 15,000 people were going to come to some area of Marion County and take over. This is not that. And so, I just want to make that reference really clear. It was pretty obvious what we did there. It was totally different than what we're doing here. And I think some of the questions, the conditional use permits, the watching over this, it's not going to, and I do, I do want to take, you know, I thank the chair for being gracious and allowing somebody to basically chide this board for the decisions that we've made that have been within the law, within our ability to do that. And as we heard earlier today, this board, this board member respects the agricultural heritage of this particular county. And I want to preserve that. And I don't think this, having to go through a conditional use permit to be able to be good neighbors with some other farmer, is going to destroy our agricultural heritage, our ability to produce the food and the products that we need to supply around the world. That, that's my opinion, obviously, there's people here that disagree with that. But the reference to a Bymark Music Festival is totally not what this is about. That would have been interrupting ability to produce the agriculture products in that particular area when we needed it, so.
And to clarify, this board denied that festival?
Correct.
Right? So, they didn't, this board didn't...
Including this board member.
This board didn't approve that festival, this board denied that festival.
Correct. But comparing this to that is not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges. Or apples to watermelons, that was huge.
Brandon, can you talk a little bit about the 750 number? Because if 80% of the event has to take place indoors, in order for 750 people to actually have an event with 750, you have to have a massive building, right? So, wouldn't the building codes limit actually how many people these events are actually going to be? It's not, it's not just the, this ordinance, there's also a building code on top of this ordinance, right?
Correct. The building code and the fire marshal both will affect occupancy for a building, identify what building can have what occupancy. So, in reality, 750 people would be a really big building. And even if 80% of them are inside the building and 20% were outside, there's some rotating because some activities were taking place outside, the chances that you'd have a building that could accommodate that, the cost for that building to retrofit a barn, I think it's just very large. 751 is when you start having to do a mass gathering. And just to have a streamlined connection between all the different types of permits, this is less than 751, and so it can be a home occupation. And then, bigger, you get into types of mass gathering permits. But the reality of it is, the parking area, everything would be very large. There are, there are large buildings that can be retrofitted and there are large parking areas that exist. There are large paved areas on farms right now that, that exist that people could easily have parking for 50 or, you know, 50 cars and 150 people right off the bat. It just depends on the circumstance of the farm and what they're willing to invest in this portion of the work.
Brandon or Lindsay, are there other counties in Oregon that have a code that supports this type of event?
Colacamas County does. It's similar. Colacamas County did adopt theirs, I believe it was roughly 20 years ago, before our winery codes and before our agritourism codes.
Thank you for your patience, Commissioners, as we went through the, listening to the testimony. I will not let that happen again. I will make sure that everybody that comes to provide testimony on a subject matter sticks to that subject matter. I think it's important in this process that we respect the process. I'd like to thank staff for the amount of time that you've put into this. As Commissioner Willis stated, there were two publicly noticed work sessions and then time that I know that you spent with other county officials potentially in Colacamas going through their code, reviewing it and producing this one. And one of the hardest things about our jobs is we can't make everybody happy. And just to note on the record, on Thursday last week, I drove into Colacamas County to a farm in an extremely residential, rural area to attend an event and it was lovely. And that producer of a significant amount of our fruits that we see around in our community hosted a lovely fundraiser for a local school and they had plenty of safety onsite to protect some of the things that I think were listed here which are viable statements. I think there's concerns and I would like to think that anybody that owns a farm wants to protect that farm to be the safest asset that's going to continue to be able to be farmed in the future outside of having an event. So, yeah, this is, I, and I'd also like to say that this process started back in, I want to say February is the first time I was notified by a citizen. And then, it was, it's a lengthy process, so it wasn't intentional to host this event today during harvest season. It didn't even occur to me when I came in today that there would not be folks available. It's never our intent to be malicious towards anybody in the community and prevent their access. In fact, I go out of my way to visit individuals in the community when they have concerns. And I live in a rural community that farms and so I'm sorry for people to think that they're, they're jaded by our time today, but that wasn't the intention by any of us. So.
I have some more comments, but I kind of want to let staff sit down if you want, unless you guys want to stay up here while we're deliberating. I just don't want, I don't want you guys to, you're here for technical support. I have some policy opinions that I want to share. So, first, Madam Chair, I, like Commissioner Cameron, I actually, I'm a little bit disturbed by some of the comments today. I felt like our integrity as a board was called into question, and so I want to address some of these things. First, we have not allowed whatever the applicant wants since I've been on this board. And often, it is very hard when an applicant has invested a lot of money into a project to look them in the face and say, "No, you're not going to get to do that." But we have done that and we will continue to do that if that's best for the people in Marion County. So, I just want to be super clear about that. And as Commissioner Cameron said, with the Bymark Music Festival, that was another instance where the board said no. Second thing is, all of us have concern for our land use laws here in Oregon. None of us want to have the kind of land use laws that result in the kind of sprawl we've seen in other states. I think California was referenced. I certainly don't, and I take exception to anybody suggesting that I do. Third, we have the best farm ground in Oregon. We have some of the best farm ground in the country and we care a lot about our farmers. We care a lot about what's best for them. Fourth, we have had no private meetings on this. We haven't hid this from anybody. All of our meetings have been public and we've invited everybody who attended to work on this project. And then, so those are the things I just want to make sure are super clear to everybody who's watching and who's here today. The other thing I want to talk about a little bit is, I think there's been some confusion about how this is going to work and what it means and some confusion about how this fits in with the farm community. So, my sister-in-law was married in a barn in Iowa. My wife and I, we had a wedding with 350 people and all of the catering was done by volunteer. My wife's from Iowa. And so, the moms have a club where they... My wife's from Iowa, and so the moms have a club where they cook the, the wedding meals together for each other's daughter's weddings, right? And so there's some, some talk about how it's not possible to have a wedding if there's only five employees. People that I know who have big families, let's say there's 10 kids in a family and then those kids all have five or six kids, you start to get to a place where you have, you have like a lot of people in your family. And if you want to invite folks to a wedding, it's going to be a multiple hundred-person wedding, unless you want to, you know, piss off one side of the family for the rest of your life. So you're going to have a lot of people coming, and a lot of times farm communities work together. So if, if, especially because there's only so much land, when the land gets passed down and you have a big family, not everybody gets the land. So if you want to keep the, the farm together, you know, one or two brothers or sisters or siblings are going to be the owners of that farm, right? Well, if one of your relatives wants to host a wedding on the family farm and they don't want to put all that burden on the owners of the farm, then there needs to be some sort of way that they can pay for that party, right? So like, I'm going to call my, my cousin or my uncle and say, "Hey, I want to have the wedding at the farm. I don't want to put you out." You know, the moms will, will do the food, but we'll pay some money to make sure that there's cleanup afterwards and we're not just leaving a big mess on the family farm, right? Like, this is, this is just real stuff. This is how farm families work. And the idea that in Marion County, my sister-in-law couldn't have had her wedding in a barn on the family farm is crazy. That's crazy. So that's what we're trying to fix here, is we're trying to make it so that people can have, specifically, what does it say? It says weddings, family reunions, class reunions, company picnics and memorials, right? And we talked about some of the companies here today. A lot of the companies in Marion County are families, the Ferrises and the Franks and, you know, Woodburn Nursery and the Fesslers, and there's a bunch of these families that have been here for a really long time, and they're not just like money-making corporate machines, they're an extension of the community, they invest in the nonprofits, they care about the schools. So the ability for these big families and these big communities to be able to come together 18 times a year to be able to have family events, I know like with my wife's family, 18 times a year, that probably wouldn't have been enough for all the different cousins to, you know, get married at the farm. So like, I, I just, I think some of the stuff that's been said today has made this seem like, like this is this big expansive thing, and that's not what this is at all. This is really just allowing the folks who live in our community in rural areas to be able to have the type of family gatherings that are natural to people who have big families in a rural way of life. And it's, and I think it's really important that we allow that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have an additional question for Brandon or Lindsay, whichever one wants to come up. The, the question is, is this would require a conditional use permit to do this, correct?
Correct.
So we pass this, pass this ordinance, when, when somebody applies for a conditional use permit, is there a notification of surrounding properties?
There is of the decision that's made, that includes the criteria, the application information, the conditions, so that people receive all of that and can base any decision they make on that.
Okay, thank you. So, so if I was a neighbor, some, we pass this ordinance and next year somebody comes in, next spring, trying to get a conditional use permit, I will find out about that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. Then I would accept a motion to close the hearing and approve the ordinance.
Is that right, Jane? Are we adopting the ordinance? Or are we just closing the...
So I think, I think the motion is to close the public hearing and then entertain a motion.
Oh, okay, so we are, we can adopt it today?
Yep.
You, you can, absolutely.
Okay.
It's number one.
Oh, Scott, I'm bringing Scott up, we can talk about the process.
Good morning, I'm Scott Norris from the Office of Legal Counsel. At this point, the board may close the hearing, close the record to further evidence, and at a later time, staff will bring back an ordinance for consideration by the board.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Then Madam Chair, I move that we close the hearing, close the record, and direct staff to return with an ordinance reflecting the board's decision.
I'll second the motion.
To approve, to approve the amendment.
Ordinance, okay, you want...
To approve the ordinance.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
This motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes, thank you. We will now adjourn the public hearing and go back into regular board session. Is there anything else for the record today, commissioners?
Beautiful day to drive to Roseburg.
Driving down there today.
Roseburg, yeah, with Commissioner Pope, yep.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Well, you're going down for some timber work? Thanks for doing that.
More, more, less controversial.
The next controversial topic of your day?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect. Well, thank you for that. If there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.